Kenny.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Plistic.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Seven present, no absent.
We have a quorum that takes us questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. We don't have anybody in our audience tonight, so we'll move past that. It takes us to the approval of our minutes for November 16th, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Hi.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Plistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shower.
Epstein.
Vaughn. I can't hear you. I believe he's saying aye. Okay, thank you.
It takes the minister approved, it takes us to receiving of communications. Any of the Aldermen have communication? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a communication from a resident, doesn't want her name out, but we're just having a conversation in general with my, with my real estate business, and she just mentioned that her and her son go through Brookhaven Shopping Center a lot lately, and not even near the, not even near the new Dunkin' Donuts spot, but like near Autozone and through the mall itself, and how dirty it was. So I had a conversation with John Manos to see what his crew could do about cleaning up. He says his crew there is there a lot, so, I don't know, maybe, you know, but that's all I got.
Mary, did you have something?
I did. I don't know if this is the time to report on it, but I will, because I had a conference call, a video, I should say, conference with our commed representative Phil Halliburton and several members of his reliability team last week to address the reoccurring issue of outages in 89 homes in Brookridge Creek on Creekside Lane and in Carriage Way West on Carlisle Court and Kimberly Court. And I'm appreciative of Phil and his team, you know, elevating the urgency of this matter and assessing the entire area, especially when it comes to trees and trimming that needs to happen. Part of their four-year trim plan is scheduled for February, so they did a complete analysis of the area, also assessed the poles and the equipment and the transformers. And it's our hope that the, the timing of it can be moved up. And I also think because of this analysis, that some other things were identified, maybe not, have been causing the problem, but they can be preemptive in the maintenance of some issues to hopefully prevent further problems. I've circled back with my two primary contact residents in those area, and, you know, we're going to stay on top of it, but really have stressed the urgency of this happening soon, because obviously losing power in the summer is not good, but you definitely, in the winter with your heat being mission critical and safety, we want to make sure that there's no issues as the weather changes and snow and ice come about. So I just wanted to take, thank commed for that, for their time and elevation of those issues.
Thank you for taking the time to do that, Mary. I hope they follow through on that.
Oh, I'll be on them, trust me.
Well, reliability has been something I've had concerns about for a while with, I'm a little bit of, Mr. Gustafson.
Yeah, this past Saturday, I did receive a call from a resident in a 2,400 block of Marlborough regarding a dead skunk they found in their front yard. They drove over there right away, and actually the skunk was breathing but unable to move. So I really didn't, I gave Dan Gomback and the police department a call, and within a half hour, they had that, that skunk removed. So I just want to thank Dan, his team, and, and the police department for, for their quick response. And Dan, I'm not sure what is the, the proper process for residents to follow when this kind of situation comes up, because, you know, this animal was, it was still breathing and, and right, right, right along curb where a lot of dogs and stuff come walking by.
And actually, you know, these are unique situations. Obviously, these animal skunks, raccoons are nocturnal, with them, with them being out in the day, more than likely, there is something that is wrong with them, you know, especially they'll get disoriented. And I just actually learned something with the police department this past weekend after talking to Greg Saturday, is they do not basically terminate a skunk because of it'll spray, but typically, when an animal is in disarray, the police will terminate that animal, and then Public Works usually picks it up right behind him.
So, so what should a resident do at that point? Do they call the police? Do they call?
They should call the police, especially after hours. Call the police, and then, you know, we typically, the police department in conjunction with municipal services will evaluate it, pick it up right away if it needs to be picked up, or whatever the case is.
Yeah, because I tried calling a couple of the wildlife centers, but they were both closed, so that wasn't an option at all.
Yeah, the wildlife centers won't come out for those types of things. If you want, you have the opportunity to take it there, but raccoons are very difficult to handle, along with skunks, obviously, and other animals sometime.
Okay.
Dan, we've had, Dan, we've had in the past, maybe a squirrel that would, that was killed, hit by a car on a Saturday or Sunday. That's something you typically would just wait until a Monday, depending on where it is?
Depending where it is, but we do have people on call that do go in at weekends for the water system, so part of their routine is to drive around town and just double check, you know, some of the main, main drags and see if there's anything out of place, you know, not, we don't find them all the time, but again, if it's something of a nuisance, especially on a hot summer day, yeah, you know, we tend to go get out there right away and pick it up, because no one wants to see that, especially with the rabies and so on and so forth.
And this one was still, still alive and breathing, so I couldn't see any damage to it, but it definitely was not even trying to move.
Anyone else? Mary?
I did receive a communication from Angela McGrail, and I also was reached out by several residents of the Tera Hill subdivision. They had received letters from the DuPage County Forest Preserve regarding the culling of deer, the shooting of deer in the Oldfield Oaks Forest Preserve because of the overpopulation. So, you know, some of the residents wanted to make sure that the city was aware that this was going to happen. I know it's happened in the past, too, so, you know, they were just concerned and questioned why that needed to be done. And I explained it was a, you know, a forest preserve decision, not a city decision. Do you have anything more to add on that, Dan, or?
No, I don't. I know this happened, as to your point, I'm going to say probably about 12, 12 years ago, if not a little bit longer, but yeah, you know, just due to that population of deer, I think at that point, at that point of time, it was the white deer, so I'm not sure what my deer are calling this time.
It takes a couple seconds.
But.
Well, there's, there's a lot of them. They're making their way down the street all the time, and definitely a bit out of sorts. They're, you know, they're leaving the forest preserve and just milling about and obviously looking for food, so.
No, we've seen situations where, you know, some of these deer get into these neighborhoods, and unfortunately, we've removed deer from, that have impaled themselves on fences, believe it or not, so it's, you know, it's amazing when their population, especially when they start to mate, that they really get out of hand.
Yeah, and Dan, you, Dan, you removed that one dead, dead deer that I found about a month and a half ago. You guys came by and removed it.
Alderman Clustak?
Thank you, Mayor. I received communication from Steve Delargino and Chuck Fehr. They're wondering if the police department can just get a opinion, if they have a concern about a going northbound I-55 and making a left onto South Frontage Road. They're still working with the State of Illinois intersection, and they just wanted a opinion from a police officer if they believe that's safe. So I already spoke to Chief Thomas about that earlier, so, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, it takes us to the mayor's report. We've had a lot of, a lot of stuff in the news about vaccination, and so I have a report that's updated as of today. Pfizer and Moderna have requested an emergency use authorization of COVID-19 vaccine to the FDA. The FDA Advisory Committee is to meet and discuss both vaccines. December 10th, they're meeting with Pfizer. December 17th, they're meeting with Moderna. And I want to emphasize how critical this is. It's not necessarily a given that they're going to be approved, our hope that they're going to be approved. If the emergency use authorization is granted to Pfizer on December 10th, the State of Illinois will receive an estimated 109 doses. 86,000 of those doses will be for the 50 counties outside of the city of Chicago. The following week, 250,000 doses, and the week after that, 300,000 doses, last week of December, plus a 700,000. And again, I can't emphasize enough that these are estimates, and these dosages or amounts are subject to change. These are the figures given to all the mayors from the DuPage County Health Department and by the governor's office. If the emergency use authorization is granted from Moderna on 12/17, the State of Illinois will receive 700,000 doses of the vaccine by the end of December. And again, I have to emphasize, these are estimates. In terms of prioritization, the initial supplies of the COVID-19 vaccine will be limited, which will require vaccine prioritization. The Illinois Department of Public Health's current plans are based on national guidance from the National Academies of Science and the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, or ASAP. Healthcare workers are the first population recommended to receive vaccine, followed by long-term care facilities. Police, fire personnel, and public works employees will be in what's called Phase B. The initial phase of inoculating all healthcare and long-term care facility personnel will take two to four months, based on supplies. Doses of the vaccine will be distributed to the county health departments based on death rates, and DuPage County is, has one of the higher death rates, so we're going to get more of the vaccine initiated. For DuPage County, the regional healthcare center is located at the Loyola University Medical Center in Maywood. DuPage County, excuse me, from there, the allotment of doses will be sent to local hospitals, and they will take care of their workers. Walgreens and CVS by contract will be administering the inoculation of patients in long-term care facilities. Currently, the vaccine will be administered to those 18 years of age or older, so there is really no plan on administering the vaccine to people under the age of 18, and there's no cutoff for the upper age brackets. There's no mandate for hospital workers to get inoculated, there's no testing as a prerequisite, and there's no cost. A database will be kept of every inoculation so as to keep a record as to how the implementation is taking place. Both Moderna and Pfizer will require two doses, somewhere between 21 and 28 days apart. And if you get a Moderna vaccine, you must get a second Moderna vaccine, the same with Pfizer. The public needs to know that other vaccines are being worked on, and if approved, that will add to the doses available to the general public. As the vaccine supplies increase, COVID-19 vaccines will be available to additional providers, including doctors' offices, retail pharmacies, hospitals, and federally qualified health centers. It is estimated that if supplies increase, all adults will be able to be vaccinated later in 2021. You can learn more at the Center for Disease Control and Prevention site under the link titled "Eight Things to Know About Vaccination Planning." And that's my report. Any questions? None, we'll move on to the city clerk's report. Joanne?
I have a couple of items this evening. Nominating papers for the position of alderman, rewards 1, 3, 5, and 7 can be submitted in person, starting on Monday, December the 14th, at 8:30 a.m. at City Hall, and the last day of filing is December 21st at 4:30 p.m. Also, the Darien City Council meeting scheduled for December 21st has been canceled. City offices will be closed on December 24th and 25th, and also on January 1st for the holidays. That's, thank you.
City administration report, Brian?
Wait, there's a question.
Mary?
Hi. Yes, in terms of, since City Hall is closed to the public, it's still, people still can come in and file their petitions in person?
The petitions must be filed in person. I will be there the, the first day and definitely the last day. They can ring the bell, and they will get assistance from staff.
Thank you, Joanne.
Any questions? Brian?
I know, report, Mayor.
Your report. Department has information and questions. Questions for Chief Thomas or for Dan Gomback?
I've got a question for Chief Thomas. Chief, since there's may no City Council meeting on the 21st, to have to assume there'll be no Police Committee meeting that night either?
That's correct. We have nothing, you know, planned, agenda-wise, so we're canceled.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? The Treasury's report, we have warrant number 202115. Presser Corrin?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 202115, in the amount of $454,698.12 from the listed fund, as well as two payrolls for the period ended November 19, as well as the period ended December 3rd, in the amount of $653,361.55, for a total to be approved of $1,108,059.67.
Motion to approve the warrant. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
One's been approved. Standing committee reports, any of the Aldermen have anything to share with the council? Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. Our admin finance meeting was canceled tonight for lack of agenda items, and our next admin finance meeting is scheduled for Monday, January 4th, presuming we have a council meeting and agenda items that night. The Economic Development Committee met last week on December 3rd, and we had a very, via Zoom, a very productive meeting, and some really good discussion came out of it, and some adjustments are going to be made to the city website to assist our businesses with quick links for COVID resources and information. I mean, most of the information is out there, but we're going to try to consolidate it and make it a little bit more easy to find and accessible. And our next Economic Development Committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 7th. Just as a reminder, the meeting pattern has changed to now being the first Thursday of the month. And lastly, the City Council budget workshops will begin on February 17th, and be, are scheduled for several weeks after that for the planning of the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Anything else? It takes us to question, comments, agenda-related. There being no one in the audience, that moves us to old business. We have no old business. It takes us to the consent agenda. Please bear with me, we have a lot of items here tonight. Item A, consideration of a motion to grant a waiver of a raffle license bond requirement for the Darien Women's Club. Item B, consideration of a motion to grant a waiver of the raffle license bond requirement for the Darien Lions Club. Consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Vulcan Construction Materials for purchase and pickup of stone for various work projects at the proposed unit prices for a period of May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Chicago Land Caving and Contractors Incorporated for the removal and replacement of batuminous aprons and road patches at the proposed unit prices as required for various projects for that same time period. Consider, item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Norwood Tank Company for culvert metal pipes, metal bands, and metal flared end sections and fitting as required for various public works projects, again, for the same time period. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Norwood Tank Company for storm sewer structures, iron sewer grates, concrete adjusting rings, again, for the proposed unit prices for the same time period. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Veil Company for high-density polyethylene pipes, bands, flared end sections, and fittings, again, at the proposed unit price for that same time period. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Veil Company for the Cloud Eddie fire hydrant repair parts, again, at the proposed unit price for that same time period. Item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main LP for pressure pipes as required for various public works projects, again, at the proposed prices for the same time period. Item J, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Vulcan Construction Materials LLC for the purchase and delivery of stone for various public works projects, again, at the proposed unit prices for the same time period. Consideration, line K, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main LP for Smith &amp; Blair stainless steel water main repair clamps, style 238, with stainless steel bolts, again, at the proposed unit price for the same time period. Item L, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main LP for general water department utility tools and marking supplies for the maintenance of the water system, again, for that same time period. Item M, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Z-Bell Water Service Products Incorporated for general water department utility fixtures for the maintenance of the water system for that same time period. Item N, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Veil Company for the Cloud Medallion fire hydrants, auxiliary valves, and accessories at the proposed unit prices, again, for the same time period. Item O, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Z-Bell Water Service Products Incorporated for the Mueller Super Centurion fire hydrants and auxiliary valves for the maintenance of the water system, again, for that same time period. Item P, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main LP for various water valves for the maintenance of the water system, again, for the proposed time, same time period. Item Q, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main LP for Smith &amp; Blair stainless steel water main repair clamp style 226 with stainless steel bolts, again, for maintenance of the water system for the same time period. Item R, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from EJ USA Incorporated for the East Jordan CD250 fire hydrants, valves, and accessories, again, at the proposed unit prices for the same time period. Item S, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Veil Company for Mueller, for Mueller brand brass fittings, again, at the proposed unit prices of the water system for the same time period. Item T, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main LP for waterless pacer fire hydrants, auxiliary valves, and accessories, again, at the proposed unit prices for the same time period. Item U, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Veil Company for the Cloud Medallion fire hydrant repair parts, again, at the proposed unit prices for the same time period. Item V, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Veil Company for the Cloud Eddie F250, 2500, fire hydrant repair parts, again, at the proposed unit prices for the same time period. Item W, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Z-Bell Water Service Products Incorporated for the Mueller Super Centurion fire hydrant repair parts, again, for the same time period. Item X, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Core and Main LP for the Type K copper pipe at the proposed unit prices, again, for the maintenance of the water system for the same time period. Item Y, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the 2021 concrete sidewalk apron incurred and gutter removal and replacement program with Suburban Concrete Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $802,975, and to waive the residential $75 permud application for concrete work. And, item Z, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract agreement for the 2021 street sweeping services between the city of Darien and Advanced Sweeping Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $40,733.50. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak, and the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Consent agenda has been approved.
Mayor, Mayor Marques, our outside mic was off. You're going to have to go through that list one more time.
And you forgot a letter.
I did. No. Won't tell me that.
Is it April Fools?
Just the holidays.
Just 2020.
Yeah, 2020.
We have no new, no new business. Do anybody, does anybody have any questions and comments, anything they'd like to add? Alderman Clustak?
Thank you, Mayor Marques. First off, really quickly, I want to wish residents in Alder and Darien a Merry Christmas and happy holidays as well. I think the rest of the council means the same as well. Secondly, as an alderman, I like to try to keep an eye out on what surrounding communities and towns do in their town, and try to. I think the rest of the council means the same as well. Secondly, as an alderman, I like to try to keep an eye out on what surrounding communities and towns do in our town and try to incorporate some of the best practices. And recently I seen a master city plan from Naperville that was really well done. And since we're going to be discussing a goal session here in January, if you have an opportunity, I'd recommend taking a look at it, forward to Brian, to forward everybody. They incorporate some new market conditions, so for example, requiring businesses that have charging stations and some other unique items that I think are really good. Maybe guys want to take a quick peek at it to see if there's anything that we could potentially incorporate in our, from them. So they're always ranked high in the city rankings all the time, so I think they always do some good stuff that potentially we can, if Congress feels that it's advisable or doable. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Mary?
I just wanted to say thank you to the city and to the Lions Club and the Rotary Club for doing such a great job decorating the clock tower area. It's very festive and very nice for the holiday season. And also wanted to wish our residents and the city staff and all the other council members a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas and just have a blessed, safe time with your families and looking forward to doing some great work in 2021 with everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just for your information, the same recording that we did last year wishing the residents happy holidays, we're going to play that again this year because it's the same group. We're not going to need to re-record that. Yesterday I had an opportunity to get out of the house and drive around Darien with my wife, probably around 7:00, 7:30. We drove around specifically for the purpose of taking a look at holiday decorations and there's a lot of beautiful decorations that people have. We were over on, in Alderman Clistic Street, up and down your street, a lot of people on, on your street do a beautiful job decorating. They're to be commended for the beautiful work they do. But we also went to other areas within Darien and saw some beautiful decorations. So I just want to remind people that if you decorated your house or if you see a house that's beautifully decorated, take a picture and send it to Mary Belmonte here at City Hall and Mary will post that in the Darien Direct Connect. I think that's, we've already had some pictures of homes come up in that, in our last Direct Connect and I'd like to see more of the beautiful homes that I saw decorated Saturday night appear in our Direct Connect. And with that, I'll wish everybody a happy holidays and a very safe, safe New Year. Anyone else?
Joe's Chris brought to my attention, happy Hanukkah to, to any of our Jewish residents that might be out there. Hanukkah starts what, Thursday? 10?
Happy Kwanzaa and all the rest. Anyone else? All right, motion to adjourn. Alderman Candy seconded by Alderman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take care of everybody.
Take care.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Merry.
Merry, merry.